So, call to order for Monday, October 2nd Select Board Meeting. A roll call attendance.
Gibson here.
Sakosha here.
Happy yellow here. Will, would everyone rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledgeance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Agenda review and approval. I am going to pull one item off the consent agenda and address it under public hearing and invited guests, and that's F. We have two residents here to speak to that.
I would like to make a motion to approve the October 2nd, 2023 Agenda as amended.
Second, oh, sorry. It's popular. Park up. I.
Gibson, I.
And for present and.
Sakosha, I.
Happy yellow, I. Well, let's move forward with public comment. So if there's anyone in the audience who would like to make a public comment, we'll wait for you until Agenda item. Looks like no one here for public comment. How about online?
If you're online, you can raise your hand, let the chair know you're ready to speak. Or if you're on a phone, you can press star six, unmute yourself, and wait to be recognized by the chair. Do another public comment portion at the end of the meeting. I'm not seeing any action.
Okay, let's move forward. So, public hearing and invited guests. I don't see anyone here from the school board. All right, so next, we would invite Jacob Hartford Haunted Walk Woodchips. Mother and son, Jacob.
Either the table or the podium, your choice. And then the microphone, you just have to press that one button until the circle turns.
Address.
I'm Jacob, last name Hartford, and we live on Sixth Road.
Sixth Keith Road, in here in town.
Thank you.
So, we're here tonight just to try to get a load of woodchips for our haunted walk that we do every year. And just to make it a little safer, a little bit better walking surface for us to put down on the trails.
And I understand that there are some old woodchips that are at the transfer station and that they're available.
Yes.
Can we give, because people are going to watch this. Can you just give us a rundown of what this is all for and what you guys do for the community?
Yeah, yeah. So, Jacob, if you want to step in any point in time. But Jacob, he's been obsessed with Halloween his entire life. We live Halloween pretty much 365 days of the year. So, about what, four or five years ago, we used to live over on Young Road. And we put together a small little haunted walk, which we thought was going to be small. And we ended up having, you know, close to 1,000 people attend. So that just kind of snowballed and spiraled his obsession. And now here we are, and we have quite the structures and smoke machines and sound and lights and everything over on Sixth Keith Road. So, yeah.
So what kind of hours are you have for anyone who wants to come visit?
Yeah, so we do it three nights. We're doing it the 21st, the 27th, and 28th this year.
Open to the public?
Yep, open to the public.
Donations are welcome.
Yep, yep, free charge. We do it from 6:30 to 9:30, or whenever the line decides to kind of fizzle out.
And important to note, they have coordinated with public safety. They have a plan in place for parking and getting in and out and having police personnel available.
Yep, yep.
So before making a motion, I just had one quick. Is it in the town's best interest to just because we've had Japanese, what's it called? Knot?
Knotweed.
Knotweed on our side roads. Should we be doing a quick disclaimer that we've cut the brush and that we won't be responsible for any invasive species on their property?
Yeah, I think that would be prudent.
Okay.
Probably recommended by insurance care.
Okay, so it's just a disclaimer that we won't be held responsible for anything that happens with woodchips would be fabulous.
Just to make a note, I don't think we have sufficient woodchips to open it up for, you know, anybody who needs them. But for people who are doing a community event, we would try to entertain them.
Excellent. So could I make a motion, Madam Chairperson?
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to allow the Hartford family to pick up woodchips from the Highway Department for use on the trails of a free haunted walk at Six, is it Keith you said?
Keith, yes.
Keith Road, to include a signed disclosure for holding the town not responsible for anything to do with woodchips.
Roll call.
Park up, I.
Gibson, I.
Sakosha.
Happy yellow, I. So I wish you well. I hope you post pictures.
Yes, we certainly will, and we hope you all attend.
Yeah, have fun!
Thank you.
Have fun.
Thanks, Jacob.
Thanks, Jacob.
Great event.
All right, next, uninvited guests would be Vanessa Price, who's going to walk us through capital improvement program and funding, which the Select Board, or the Planning Board, has been working on prioritizing.
So as Vanessa gets set up, Vanessa is going to talk about the process that the Planning Board has gone through to this point, which includes an update from last year's process. And then, once Vanessa's done, the Select Board is going to dig into the funding of the capital improvements program. That's the Select Board's role in this process. This is a planning board document. So certainly, any comments from the Select Board will be brought back to the Planning Board, but it's the Planning Board's to finalize. Once that document is finalized, it's really the Select Board's responsibility to figure out how to implement it. And the biggest part of implementing it is obviously funding it. And so that conversation will happen after Vanessa is done. But certainly, any changes the Select Board wants to recommend to the CIP, that would be best done with Vanessa while she's here. And I will pull up on the screen the documents that the Select Board is looking at, and I'll turn it over to you, Vanessa.
Thank you. I have a, I just did a quick PowerPoint of the overview. I'm just trying to get up on Teams so I can share my screen.
Perfect.
Just give me a moment while it thinks about it.
And so in your packet, and consequently attached to the Town Administrator Report, for anybody following along at home, is a report from the Planner to the Select Board with the draft CIP. This is the narrative portion. And then separately, in the 11 by 17, this is that full list of projects. And the list that you have is ordered in priority order based on the year they're recommended. So you'll see the 2024 projects, followed by the 2025 projects, all the way out to 2034. And so the color coding for those relates to the anticipated funding source. And you can find the legend for that on the last page of the 11 by 17.
I want to point out to the residents that this is unusual, that we are able to look at a document like this and look at it over 10 years. I don't think this has come before the Select Board in this way before. I knew that Connor was working on this. 10 years, I didn't expect to see 10 years out. This is a pretty amazing look at what the needs are in the town. So thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay, I think I'm up and running. Just to give you a little bit of history, for those of you that haven't gone through the capital improvement process before. To define the capital improvements, as part of the CIP process, as Connor had already mentioned, it goes through the Planning Board. Communication between Planning Board and School Board go into preparing the CIP. And the preparation and adoption of a capital improvements plan is an important part of a municipality's financial planning and budgeting process. And the purpose of the plan is to recognize and resolve deficiencies in existing public facilities and anticipate meet future demands for capital facilities and their replacement of vehicles and equipment. And for this purpose of the CIP, capital projects have been defined as those projects outside normal operations and maintenance and having the following characteristics. So the first is a gross cost of at least $10,000, a useful life of at least 10 years, and is a nonrecurring, not annual budget item, or any project requiring bond financing. Now, the reasons to prepare a CIP, it's not just a, the plan is not just a wish list. It also helps preserve public health, cell, safety, and welfare. It anticipates the demands of growth, improves communication and coordination, avoiding tax rate spikes, provide for fair distribution of capital assets. It helps build a foundation for growth management impact fees, and helps identify scatter and premature development while supporting economic development. Just to give you a little bit of a history of data collection timeline, I started this effort in June, early June, requesting capital improvement projects from department heads, the Conservation Commission, and the School Board. And June through August, I met with the town department heads in person, virtual, over the phone, through email, to get the requested projects and priority. And then in September, I finalized the CIP report, and I did two data Excel spreadsheets. The first one, it was kind of a little bit hard to separate out, but the first one are the projects submitted by department heads. And those are breakout of projects of projects and vehicles. We first did that because it was, sometimes you, well, most of the time, there's different revenue avenues. But also, it's almost like apples and oranges, like how do you do vehicles versus perhaps capital projects? And the second spreadsheet that you'll see in your packet was finalized by the CIP Planning Board Recommendations. There were priority projects. At the recent Planning Board Work Session on September 19th, the Department discussed Department Head Rankings and the recommendations for the future fiscal years. Overall, they did not have comments on the department rankings. But on the second spreadsheet where it's color-coded, there was several topics, but the big discussion points that we talked about, they wanted to support all land use department projects. Little plug for me there, but they're interested in looking at the Swains Dam and all those projects in relation to that for funding. They were hoping it could be addressed in 2024, but then realized that there may be, there's other things not taken in account, like engineering and that sort of thing, that might not be available until 2025 to start at. The other discussion topics, recommended changes to the Conservation Commission requests. A lot of their, their four projects that they identified, the Planning Board felt heavily that since the planning, or the Conservation Commission already has a fund, that they utilize their funds and not necessarily cost share. And there was a discussion of staffing, that they wanted a conservation planner and a comprehensive conservation management plan. And the discussion was, well, wouldn't that fall under the Land Use Department, what that might look like, since the Conservation Commission's underneath Land Use Department? So as we're here today to review the Select Board meeting, to comment and revise anything that you see in the CIP that you have questions on, and at the Planning Board's November 7th meeting, the Board will vote for adoption of the CIP. And I think with that, that's all I have. Presentation.
Thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There's a little discrepancy between the narrative on the library and then the, and then your spreadsheet, I think, reflects the anticipated use of the, this facility over here on 23, as opposed to the $5 million that's there. And I think the narrative portion of the library talks about $5 million.
Oh, yes.
Talked back at 350.
Yeah, you're correct. The library submitted to me, there are $5 million. And then the last minute, there was like, remember the new evolution of change in scope? So thank you for pointing that out, and make sure that's good change in the narrative. Yep, I appreciate that.
I understand what you did.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. In reference to the school district and the $10 million proposed for 12 classrooms, I remember that we reviewed the enrollment expectations based on some projections of homes being built. Like, for instance, between 2010 and 2020, there was approximately construction of 343 homes and an increase of about 750 people. I'm just, I was kind of shocked when I read that portion of things, because it was my understanding when we digested the demographic study that, while we don't anticipate a declining enrollment, we also don't anticipate a large spike in enrollment. So can I ask where the $10 million and 12 additional classrooms generated from?
Yes. I will try my best.
Okay.
So as part of this process, each department, as well, and School Board and Conservation Commission, have filled out essentially like an information sheet to get these desires or their projects that they want to do. So if you don't mind, I can just read off the paper and see if that helps. So the description of the project, "Due to increasing enrollment from the NESDEC study, class sizes have increased and have also resulted in an increase in special services. Many new complexes and housing developments are being built in Barrington, which would result in the increase in class sizes. We are anticipating the need for at least one classroom per grade level, and also currently need spaces for therapies and counseling services. The additional four classrooms will allow for future growth, so this project will sustain for a minimum of 20 years into the future. The ECLC has a space that can be converted into a classroom with the addition of a bathroom." Does that help? Maybe not.
I might be able to add to that. So, you know, I, oh, let Dan in first, please.
Yeah, I think you remember when we discussed the NESDEC, whatever that acronym was, that they didn't include a lot of the new development that had not been started yet, the plans. Plus, we did point, they did point out that the classrooms now are larger than they need to be, and they've had to really divide up the space, especially at the elementary school, put people in, had to remove some of the other things. Space for the therapy. That may come on this.
And as I remember, School Board said they would have updated for what we.
Okay.
Which we don't have.
Yeah, I just, I was, I was surprised based on the digestion of the data from that study to see this as part of the capital improvement plan. I'm not sure how many students we graduate each year at the high school level, but that I know of, from 2021 until 2025, there will, and this is to include apartments, there'll be approximately 143 to 165 homes, some of which will not contain students, but based on the prior decade, we didn't see a huge increase in enrollment over that. And so bringing forward in a capital improvement plan, a large chunk of this is $10 million for the school. I was surprised by it.
Just a couple of notes, if I may. So I think the enrollment study was really interesting, because the data from the enrollment study came back and said, your enrollment's going to be steady.
Steady.
And then included, this includes projects under construction, but doesn't include, as Danan mentioned, projects that are in the approval pipeline. And what they did is they provided a formula for the projects that were in the approval pipeline that could be applied, that is basically the background of the analysis that they do, to say, we anticipate X number of students per 10 housing units of this type of housing unit. And I think it's important to note that single-family homes has a much higher rate of children in the school system than apartments or condos. Much higher rate, tenfold higher, higher rate. And so that, the, the school in part used that data to say what units are in the approval pipeline and what do we anticipate for enrollment. So the surprise that I had was that this was programmed for a 2025 timeline, because that's pretty aggressive. My understanding is, and Dan, you can correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think there's any real planning in place for the, the actual addition feasibility study, things like that. So I think the 2025 timeline might be optimistic. I don't know that for certain. And then the final point that I'll make is, the school district is an outlier of this process in that the Planning Board and the Select Board don't have any bearing over the decision-making of the School Board. It's important to keep that as part of the process, and the goal is to be able to make recommended timeline decisions based on what we know our capital needs are. And so it would be appropriate for the Select Board to say, hey, we have $10 million worth of infrastructure projects that we have programmed for 2025. Is it possible for the school to consider targeting 2026 or 2027, so that we're not hitting residents with a $20 million ask in one year, or something like that? That would be their decision, but that would be in the scope of what the Select Board's role in school district projects as part of the CIP.
So, so then I would make that recommendation, that we ask them to push it further out and not include it in a $21 million bond in 2025.
Is there consensus from the Board on that?
I'd like to see their current figures coming in October to see if that kind of changes the information that was presented.
Sure. Do we know how their figures match up with Stratford Regional Planning Commission? Because I've heard different figures from them too, and they don't always.
Those were old. Remember when they presented? I think it was 2018, wasn't it?
They presented again this past weekend. And it just seems, it wasn't clear to me how, how much of a growth we were anticipating. It'd been interesting to see how different groups' numbers all.
Because the library budget's already, or I mean, the school's budget.
Microphone. Thank you.
The school's budget's 28 million right now, right? Plus or minus. And are we talking about just in assisting with that with $10 million or some of it, all of it?
It would be a bond initiative where they would ask residents to raise $10 million over 20 years, 20-year repayment schedule. So the middle school bond was a 25 year, 30?
It's a long.
I think it was, I think it was only 20.
Okay, I think you're right.
And I say that because I built my house the year that the middle school was, and it's, I'm pretty sure it was 20, yeah.
So that, and that was just last year. So I mean, that would be the same. And, and in school planning, you know, they try to plan so that you're not needing an addition while you're still paying off the bond, right? And so that's the planning. In separate conversations with the superintendent, I do know that they have capacity at the middle school. And so they, they don't anticipate a need at the middle school to accommodate the growth that they are anticipating based on their additional projections above the enrollment study. And then, as Vanessa mentioned in the write-up, they do have some capacity at the Early Childhood Learning Center for school and kindergarten.
I think it would be helpful for the taxpayers if we could push it out to conduct the feasibility study in 2024 and potentially, if the feasibility study returned a need for it, place it before voters in 2026 instead of overwhelming them in 2025. By the way, I'm all for public education. My daughter's a special education case manager in a, in a, an area not far from here. And I feel very lucky that my kids attended Barrington Schools. So please don't get me wrong, in my perspective on public education, I think this town is amazing in teaching our students. I just, I look at the impact on the tax rates and.
And it feels like it impacts what we might put forward.
Yeah, I just, I just don't, looking at the data from, from even just an approach to it, I think it could be easily pushed out a year based on the projects that I know are before planning and will not be completed by 2025.
Back when our Board met and did our strategic planning, was there a written summary that came from that yet? Do you have that?
In various forms, yeah. The consultant and I are still working on finalizing a summary of those actual action items.
It would be nice to, to bring that and make sure that, that there isn't anything that we're missing from that as well. We've talked about this in the past, about getting boards to kind of come together and so that we can kind of have strategic planning together. So it would be nice to, you know, work with the, the School Board, work with in planning, and make sure all of our strategic goals coalesce in ways that will actually prove false.
I don't know. I guess Vanessa's the one to ask, but maybe you know too, Rob. I guess it looks like the Conservation Commission's decided to rebuild that dam, as opposed to getting rid of.
Not yet.
Yeah, I, I am surprised that it's the last thing on the list for Planning Board, since that's been around for a while. I do know we don't have all the data back.
So I can clarify a little bit about that. I just wanted to mention one thing, just going back to the School Board. I know that it was mentioned at a prior Select Board meeting that they may want to look at impact fees again. And that's something that I just wanted to know that that might be a tool as well with helping with those costs. Now, on to the Richardson Dam project. Originally, it was ranked higher on the list when it went to the Planning Board. The Planning Board decided to put it last because, because this is where they a little bit struggled too, is funding and how to prioritize it. And it was the consensus of the Board that it should be last on the list because the Conservation, as a Conservation Fund. And they didn't feel that splitting the cost, because it's all taxpayer money, is how it was represented by them. They put it down on the list. A little bit more historical stuff on it, I guess, like, one of the Planning Board members, who was previously on the Select Board, had mentioned that there was other agreements that were made several years ago that he recalled, and that's why he suggests, that person suggested that it should be lower on the list as well, because it was his intention that he thought it was going to be paid by the Conservation Commission.
Is that an actual agreement?
I don't know, so that's, but that was his threshold.
Nothing would be binding, right? So a Select Board, the Select Board has the unique ability to make the decision that they think's right for the community at the time that they're sitting. So the, this is a perfect example of the separation of duties between the Planning Board and Select Board, right? So the Planning Board is well within their right to say, we think the Richardson Pond Dam replacement should be last on the list and the lowest priority, and we think the Conservation Fund should pay for all of it. Well within their purview to make those recommendations and include it in the CIP. The Select Board separately, in setting policy decisions for the town, and more importantly, setting the funding trajectory for the town, is well within its right to say, we're going to present a $200,000 warrant article to residents in 2024 to fund, you know, 60% of the Richardson Pond Dam replacement with a cost share of the Conservation Fund of $150,000. So both things can happen. They, the Planning Board and the Select Board don't have to agree. The Planning Board has their role, the Select Board has their role. And to the point, and Danan, you had mentioned this, the, the specific sticking point right now with reconstruction versus removal, I don't think anybody's really promoting removal, except to say it was properly evaluated as an option. And the, the trouble is DES has yet to make a determination, despite our efforts, on whether removal is considered wetland impacts or wetland restoration. And there's a huge difference in cost, because what was created by that dam is an enormous prime wetland. And impacts to prime wetlands are very costly from a permitting perspective. Now, logic would say, if you take a man-made structure and you remove it and return it to its natural environment, that that would be wetland restoration, not wetland impacts. That isn't the immediate perspective of our partners at the state. And so they need to come to a conclusion, I think, from all of the stakeholders, removal is off the table completely if it costs significantly more than reconstruction. At least, that's what I've heard. If you've heard different, please let me know. But if the costs are similar, then removal may be worth considering, so we don't have to worry about the infrastructure anymore. There are benefits, there are items in that part of the Venn diagram. But we need to, a determination from the state, and we have yet to been, to be able to secure that definitively and continue to work on that. I think that doesn't change the fact that the target is still a 2024 project. And it's still worthwhile considering funding for 2024 and any funding split. But we'll talk about funding soon. We'll, we'll finish up with the narrative and any other recommended changes. I just want to be clear about the school thing before we go too far past that. Does the Select Board collectively want to make a recommendation to the School Board right now? Or do you want to wait until farther in the process, maybe after we have enrollment numbers or other information?
Yeah, I would prefer.
Okay, so we'll wait. We'll revisit a recommendation on that. That's a good soft approach. And Danan, don't forget your microphone. You too.
Vanessa, to you.
So I didn't really have anything more to present. That was the big changes, or basically the Conservation Commission ones. And that was basically due to the. And that was basically due to the funding that the planning board felt that it should come from Conservation Commission. The other projects I highlight to note was that the Swains Lake Causeway, all parts of that project were a high priority for the road agent as, as well as discussion with the planning board. That should be looked at sooner rather than later. I don't know if you want me to go down each one of these projects or, okay, I didn't think so. That was really the only other big discussion item was that. There was a discussion of how can we rate vehicles, like I kind of mentioned before about vehicles versus projects themselves. I know there's different pots of money for that, but. It was a major discussion.
I had another thought. If we're considering moving the library, does that alter the rec energy conservation business at all? I know that's one wall. Some of those things are projected out to be 30 or 40 years payback. Do we make the money on it? I wonder if we want to at least consider some of those things. I, I don't have a problem necessarily. I just see where we considered the fact that the library, they, you know, rec may be taking over the upstairs. That impacts how we process that energy audit and recommendations for.
That's a really good question, and you have a copy of the energy audit in your packet. I'll be talking about it under staff report. I can have that conversation now if you think it's helpful. The headline as it relates to the CIP is that we're in a holding pattern until we know where we're going with, with the building. But we have some really good planning in place so that when we have a direction, we can pull the proverbial trigger and, and get a lot of that worked on.
Vanessa, I know at the recent planning board meeting, there was a discussion about the Lakeside Oaks culvert and why we couldn't just connect that with Pearl Lane and Peabody Way. And that has, that did come before the select board in 2020. There was a legal review of it and it's thought that the determination was that that was not possible to do and the select board at that time voted against it.
That's what I know of it as well.
So if there aren't other recommended changes to the priorities or the narrative, we can shift the focus to funding. Everybody ready for that? So what I have done is in the town administrator report, I listed recommended changes to the projects and priorities and then funding source recommendations. And this is not to execute the select board's role for you. And so I would welcome any conversation or changes to these recommendations so that it's a plan that you all are comfortable with and have the political will to pursue. And I'll emphasize where that's most important in a minute. So if you look at the 11 by 17 spreadsheet, again, you'll see those color-coded funding sources. The reason that's important is because a lot of these items we've already been planning for and we already have funding in place for, right? So the Coffey Dam, the very first one there, $115,000. We have that cash on hand in the dam engineering repair and replacement capital reserve. And the engineering's underway and we're ready to go with that in 2024. We don't need to take any special action to implement that part of the CIP. And, and that's the goal, right? The goal is to when you have the very next year, you want to have a plan in place for all of these things. I'm going to skip the riprap filter for just a second, but Pond Hill Culvert's engineering, we've already received the grant to pay for that engineering. The design and engineering for the impact fee, we've already talked about having a warrant article to present to voters. The ambulance and the forestry truck, we already have cash on hand for those. So it's important to note that if we're not talking about funding sources or changing priorities, that doesn't mean we don't have a plan in place. We're just not going to spend time on that now unless you all have questions. So to the, in, if you reference in my report on the first page, and the changes to the priorities and projects. In consultation with the road agent, I'm proposing that the select board consider changing the riprap filter for the Swains Dam from a 2024 project to a 2025 project. The purpose of this is twofold. First, it was originally thought that doing the Coffey Dam, which is the structure of the dam and the riprap filter, which is on the lakeside embankment of the dam, at the same time would be a reduced overhead project. Once, now that the engineering's underway, it's more clear that those two projects would probably get in the way of each other. And so the Coffey Dam is the higher priority. We're still proposing that for 2024. But moving the riprap filter to 2025 seems to make sense. The other big reason is in order to, through the capital reserve saving program, save enough money to be able to pay cash for that $500,000 scope in 2025. So we'll talk about funding in a minute, but before I move off that priority, are there any questions? Please.
So over 2024 and 2025, based on the yellow highlight, we have 173 grant funds.
Right. Yes. Yep. And if you had specific questions, I can tell you what those grants are, but yes, that's.
That's exciting.
Absolutely.
Great job writing grants.
Lot of hard work.
Yes.
And, and as you well know. So moving on to the changes to the projects and priorities, this is little B. Increase the public safety building design engineering impact fee from 110 to 150. So we'll refine this throughout the process, but I just want to aim high and be able to bring it down opposed to starting at 110 and realizing that with the impact fee study and the design and engineering would be more. Any objections to that? Great.
That would go to a bid, right?
It would, yes. Yep, great question. Okay, and then the last change to the projects and priorities, proposing to move the effective heating and cooling for the recreation building to 2025. And this speaks to your point, Danan, about the implementing the energy audit recommendations and the timing with the library and vacated space or not vacated space. It would be better to let, to understand the decisions that voters make and what happens with the building before moving forward with that project. And the energy audit recommended higher priority projects ahead of replacing those heating and cooling systems, so.
But it would still keep the wall, the replacement or the upgrade of the wall.
Correct. Correct. Yep. Okay, now moving to funding, and I'll just continue to move through these. If you have objections or questions, please just stop me. So back to the dam engineering repair and replacement capital reserve. Since we're going to move that 500,000 to 2025, if we add 200,000 to that capital reserve this year and 200,000 in 2025, we will have cash on hand funding available to complete that project. So the funding plan for that project is 200,000 this year, 200,000 next year. And we'll be able to accomplish both of the high priority projects for the dam. Letter B, present 150,000 warrant article for the public safety, design, engineering and impact fees. We've talked about that. We'll refine that through the process, but we'll make that commitment here. So relative to the recreation wall, so the proposal that best aligns with our unknown timeline and the different options for that building are for the select board to commit ARPA funds. We have about $400,000 in uncommitted ARPA funds available, 400,000. We had 950,000 and we've, we have committed 550,000. So what the ARPA funds does, pledging ARPA funds, earmarking ARPA funds is, that is cash on hand. And we can execute on that plan on any timeline. We don't have to wait for a town meeting approval. We don't have to wait for anything. When the time's right, we can execute that. The, when we talk about the energy audit, we'll talk about a couple of the moving parts. And it could be that that project is lumped in with other changes to the building. And it could be that that portion of the project is still funded by ARPA funds, or maybe it's grant funds or something different. So my recommendation is earmark ARPA funds for that. We'll withhold about $100,000 from ARPA funds as committed to that project and we'll wait. Please.
So in the study that was done, the air system and the way that it faces for that building, a solar array, ARPA funds is able to be.
They absolutely would. The, I've talked with a few folks about the solar opportunities for that building. And what the folks at Resilient Building Group did not really contemplate are the structural impact of the shallow pitch roof and installing solar panels in that way. So would it be a good installation, location for solar panels? Yes. Is it feasible structurally? Maybe not. So we would need to figure that out first. That's one of the things the Energy Committee is going to be working on. So, but good question. Yes, ARPA funds would be eligible for that. So now moving on to the library, which Dan and you mentioned, three and a half million is the, the target right now. I'll note that the library trustees have their architect and construction manager costing out the design, anticipated renovation costs of the 426 Caleb Highway property right now. And so we will have a more definitive number soon. The proposal right now is three and a half million. And so what the recommendation here is, is to present a bond article to residents in 2024 to fund the library proposal and renovation of the vacated library space. And so this is where, we've talked about it a few times, but I'm looking for a decision from the select board. The, what we have talked about, what we talked about as strategic planning was to leave the space at 105 Ramsdale Lane functional to be used with funding from the bond article. So not to approve a library, move out, leave the library space as it is and require another funding source at a later date to, to make that space functional. So what the library trustees have done, as you know, because you ratified the funding, is use their architect to draw up plans for the library space at 105 Ramsdale Lane on how it would be reconfigured for recreational use. I say recreational use, really it's community center use, but for, for use as part of the overall project. And so they're similarly having that costed out alongside the renovations to the 426 Caleb Highway property. And so the select board can obviously reserve the right to change their mind or narrow the focus once we know the actual numbers. But the big thing that I'm looking for the select board to make a decision about is whether you're in support of including as one article, as one warrant article, renovating all or a portion of the 105 Ramsdale Library space and renovating the 426 Caleb Highway space. So pause what, we can have discussion about that.
What about the possible purchase of the 425 space?
Renovation and purchase.
3.5 million.
That includes the purchase of the building?
Projection. Again, I think it's, it's early to be talking about definitive numbers until we know the renovation costs. But the three and a half, whatever bond would be presented would include at a minimum, the purchase and renovation. And the proposal is to include renovation at 105 Ramsdale.
I, I think it should all be under one. Unfair to do one without the other. Vacant building with nothing and all one project. Leave it how you got it, they think, right?
Yeah, I wanted to see what the energy audit was on that building, but I mean, there's so much to do there. It's not ready to put that in.
The other part of the consideration is the energy consideration in some ways separate from what you're talking about. Libraries.
That one where they did the wall and the roof, that maybe.
Yeah, but that would, whether there's a library there or not, that probably needs to be done. But the space itself that is now the library has to be pretty oriented, I think. Be useful for the rec and the community center.
Well, well, even just, you know, total clean out.
Microphone, please.
Even just a, a total clean out, fresh walls, fresh paint, you know, an open area. And then, you know, if, if further plans have to go to, you know, what they want.
Yeah, remove the.
Yeah.
Check out your books.
So I think it's important that we get the numbers back before we, but I think conceptually, I agree with select person Sokosha that we should be including the two projects for the community center and the new library space. And I think it's important that we keep in mind that the library can still be going for that $800,000 grant, which would certainly help, help offset some of the 3.5 million. And that they have had very generous donations from community residents and businesses. And so there's, I think, another 275,000 already collected and some more coming. So I think that, you know, approaching the residents with a conceptualized, here's, here's the build out is important.
Has the rec department conceptually presented what their plan was for that building as far as what portion of it, like a community center versus offices versus that?
Yes. So like I mentioned, the architect from SMP drew up interior renovation plans for the library space on how it would be configured for community center recreation use. So I don't know that I have the file in front of me, but the, the plan would be you walk in. On the right would be community room space, I think a big program room, divisible by an accordion separator. There would be stairs down to the current space in the gym. And then on the left, there would be, I think, some offices like check-in. So this would kind of be the main entrance. There would be check-in space, a window into the gym like that.
Oh, neat.
But there is, there is planning in place. And like I said, that was paid for out of the library and community center capital reserve that we've been contributing to for a few years.
Excellent. It's exciting.
So am I hearing consensus for conceptually including all or a portion of renovation of the vacated library space with the bond article, subject to change once we know the actual numbers?
For my brain.
A good non-committal.
Yes.
Approach.
A good, we don't know the final numbers, yeah.
An unequivocal maybe.
One word, one love.
All right, perfect. So moving on. So I'm on letter E here. Present a $200,000 warrant article in 2024 for the Richardson Pond Dam replacement with 150,000 to come from the Conservation Fund. So again, now is the time to talk about funding. We've talked about the select board's role and the planning board's role. The, we won't know what the cost is until we know whether we're removing or replacing and until engineering is at least underway. 350,000 is a reasonable estimate right now. And the previous conversations with the Conservation Commission, which aren't finalized, there's no formal agreement. But the conversation has been a cost share with a higher cost for an individual warrant article and a smaller cost for the Conservation Fund. This is back when you were chair, Dan, and I know we had some meetings with the Conservation Commission Chair. We talked about anywhere from 2575 to 6040 in that, in that range. Do you remember any thing like that? So the proposal as far as CIP process is $200,000 warrant article, 150,000 from the Conservation Fund. That would obviously rely on a decision from the Conservation Commission. The select board doesn't have authority to spend money from the Conservation Fund. But having the select board set a policy objective would facilitate a conversation with the Conservation Commission. Are you willing to encumber earmark this portion of the Conservation Fund for this purpose?
Does the Conservation Fund have that type of funding? And if we were to make that recommendation, are we utilizing all of their funding?
Great question. So the Conservation Fund balance right now is about $550,000. They do have some of that earmarked. I don't, probably you might know better. There's some committed to the Landry Conservation Project.
If the town forest expansion is to happen. Keep in mind too, the money that feeds the Conservation Fund is limited. And over time, it will probably only go down. And Barrington's enjoyed conservation land and trails and things that we want to upkeep and support long-term. Not sustainable to think that money that the Conservation Fund has is always going to be like this. And so I'm in support of a cost share.
And so of that 500 and some thousand, we've committed 100,000 to the Landry. So that's part of that.
Right.
The whole.
So I'll take that sound.
They do, the Conservation Commission does a really good job, and I think it's Jack Gale's responsibility right now. In, in every set of minutes, they include an accounting of the Conservation Fund and what is committed or earmarked. I'll pull up the minutes from their September 14th meeting and I might be able to speak in specific terms. I'll pull up the minutes from their September 14 meeting and I might be able to speak in specific terms.
Yeah.
Right. 75% of land use. So there'll be less land use as we build everything up.
Of course, the first one I checked just had a balance.
So is there a sense that people want to work out, maybe we don't need to know the specifics of 60, 50, 50, 25, 75? I don't know if we need to do those yet, but are we?
Is it realistic to like do 5 eighths, 250 in a warrant article and 100,000 from Conservation Fund? In hearing that we know they're already down to 450, that it's going to be a dwindling funding source. And our expectations will continue to be that they're maintaining the trails and helping with parking lot signage and things like that.
Well, I think in parking lot development.
Oh, it's more than what they currently have.
Right. But aren't some sites needing parking spaces to be developed?
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's always things like that with the trails and stuff that they're trying to add to.
Five eighths first and I think it would be the 250 and 100,000 seems more appropriate with limited.
You know, and one thing that we looked at as a board is the interconnectivity trails. Now we want to, we have that as a goal for the future. I don't think any of us know how that looks.
And have they reached out to the snowmobile club or vice versa? Because I definitely think those two groups should be working together. I think both offer some really good attributes that each other don't have together.
Knowledge of trails.
Are we thinking about snowmobile access for Richardson? Is that a possibility?
Yeah.
I haven't heard that.
It goes, the trail goes right over by there.
Right onto Richardson. Yeah, I've walked their bridge multiple times.
Well, yeah, I didn't know that snowmobile had access through.
Yep. Over from.
pasture hill.
So cost share, larger portion on an individual warrant article, smaller portion from the Conservation Fund. We'll identify those numbers more specifically when we have more information.
Yeah, because it could go, could go out between now and then, right?
Could go out.
Right.
If it hasn't gone out this year with all the rain and flooding, I think it's probably good for a while. We'll go talk to our partners at the state and say, hey, this letter deficiency you've been talking to us about.
Water snakes on the Winnie the Pooh trail living out towards that area.
Okay, moving on to letter F. And this is the biggest one. When I talked about political will earlier. So we're, we're up against a situation where we have a lot of infrastructure that we're looking at in a short period of time. And so what I have proposed for your consideration is to consider utilizing a 10 and a half million dollar bond article in 2025 that would address all of the young, young road crossings along Swains Lake totaling $6 million. The entirety of the Tollend Road project, which is projected at $2 million. The Deer Ridge Road reconstruction estimated a million dollars. And the Malago Road project, which is estimated at one and a half million dollars. And so this, it's possible that we could extend these projects out over a number of years and do a couple million at a time, repeat visits to residents. At the strategic planning session, we talked about the value of consolidating and going to residents and saying, hey, here's this. The other important thing to note is based on timing of implementation, we could receive bonding authorization from residents at 10 and a half million dollars and not borrow all of the 10 and a half million dollars at once. We could borrow as we need it. If we're using the bond bank, we have two chances a year to go to the bond bank and draw down our bonding, from our bonding authorization. And finally, we have been and will continue to be working in earnest to secure grant funding for any or a portion of these projects. And I don't think for CIP purposes, where we are with grant pursuits right now, we can count on those funds. But anything that we can do to reduce the cost to residents, the direct cost to residents, we'll continue to do. So thoughts on a 10 and a half million dollar grant proposal in 2025 for infrastructure, roads, bridges, culverts?
I think it's, as you point out, we don't have to borrow all 10 and a half million that first shot. I wonder how difficult that will be to explain to people. And we can't count on it. It would seem to me at the very least, the $6 million should be one chunk with the Swain Lake business. That all in one. I don't know. How you all, all three of those areas need to be replaced. It seemed to me that they ought to be done. It's close to all, as an altogether project. The other two projects important to the other projects.
I think we're going to need to be ready to explain to the residents of Barrington the impact of these roadways. You, you're required as a municipality to provide safe, passable roads. And you can't be collecting taxes in homes that are all over Barrington without that access. I think it becomes very important for, for the residents to understand that you can't just allow these things to crumble over time. It has to be done.
School, school one goes forward and we push that to 2025. There's 10 million there and 10 million.
2026 is what I'm hoping on that one.
Okay, that would, that would help. But you have the safety building too.
Right.
So it just makes sense to couple, bundle the.
And that's certainly a conversation. I didn't present it that way, not, not for any reason other than when we talked to strategic planning, we talked about bundling public safety and library. And we talked about the pros and cons of the different groups that might support a library or might support a new renovation addition to a public safety building. And the discussion wasn't conclusive, but it seemed like there was focus on there being enough difference that it would be respectful voters to let them choose or let them make the decision. I think as it relates to the infrastructure projects, there's a value, there's an inherent value in bundling projects around town, right? The $6 million on Young Road, there's a good portion of residents that never drive Young Road. Right? But maybe those residents live on Malago Road or drive Tollend Road or live on Deer Ridge. And similar, you know, Deer Ridge, that's a residential neighborhood. You're not driving through Deer Ridge to get anywhere. You don't save much time cutting off the 9125 intersection through Deer Ridge and a lot less time when it's all bumpy. But that bundling those projects might make political sense in order to garner the support necessary to get them all done. If, as Tracy said, we need to do them. Whether or not to bundle it with the public safety building, now you're looking at, you know, maybe a $14 million bond instead of a 10 and a half and a three and a half. And, you know, that's why you all get paid the big bucks to make the determination of if that's attainable or not. And certainly, you know, we're looking at 2025, so there's time to get there. And we can get out in, in the public and ask residents how they might react to those type of.
We are to wait until 2025 on the 10 million for the roadways? Are we anticipating an increase in the cost to borrow the funds?
If I had that crystal ball, probably on Wall Street.
Okay.
But what I'll tell you is that based on our anticipated timeline for having these projects ready for construction. We have these programmed as 2025 projects. So as I mentioned earlier about borrowing the funds and not having to borrow them all at once. If we receive the bonding authorization in 2024, we're not going to borrow until we need the money because we're not going to start paying interest until we spend the money. And it could be 2025 or 2026 before we borrow all that money. And so the, the interest rates may go up, may go down.
Understood.
And so I don't think that we would know with certainty. I know that we're not going to borrow the money until we need it. And I know that we won't be ready to do these road projects until 2025, just based on the engineering requirement.
Very good. Thank you.
So I was saying to Connor, I wondered if it was going to be a hard sell with roadwork. I mean, it's not a very jazzy thing to spend your tax money on. But we talked about, especially around Swains, if you had walkways, if you had safe walkways on those roads, might get people's attention because people are concerned that they can't walk around there because.
I'm not really sure that I'm 100% certain, certainly understand where Young Road is. What, what roadways are Swains Lake causeways?
So the first one is the culvert that is right by the boat launch. The second one is the, the, the second one, I think, is like a deck platform that separates. There's a peninsula or a cove on the north side of Young Road away from Swains Lake. So that crossing is another causeway. And then the third one separates another cove that's off Swains Lake. And I forget the, the details of that structure. But it's those three structures that separate water body with Swains Lake that are the, the pinch points into the chair's point about safe walkways. The when you have a crossing like that, the cheaper option is to make it as narrow as possible. That, that doesn't, isn't conducive to walkways and fishing and all the rest. And so we have talked about, and the planning that we're doing right now is focused around widening those for the safety of people that might want to fish off or walk across them. And that would help facilitate a widening of the road through that section that would allow for safer walking use of that area.
I don't know if anyone's looked at the, our binder yet, but the, the road agent has a description of how they've been managing the culverts there and how it used to be managed. It's an interesting one page reading. Be some unsafe practices.
So we'll, there isn't objection to earmarking a 10 and a half million dollar bond for 2025? I think we all recognize what we're up against and we have time to plan and prepare for that. So we should be. Is there anything else before we move on from this item?
Yeah, I mean, it, it's tight and, you know, here's why I gain a lot of my fans. But I mean, the, the roads were, were made for vehicles. So I mean, you know, it's got to be, you know, that little roadway or the extra walking space that we're going to make around the water, it's super expensive.
Those, those causeways are super popular for fishing though, fishing. And a lot of people do locket, so.
I know they do, but you know, it also comes down to, okay, how much money are we going to spend for a certain amount of people that only do that? So it's just, you know, looking at the, the greater picture, not everybody fishes and walks that way. So. Drives that way.
Right. And to that point, what we, we have the engineering underway for these causeways and how we have had, how we directed the town's engineer is to give us an engineer's cost estimate for both scopes, replacing in kind at the current width and widening. Fortunately, from an engineering perspective, there isn't a lot of additional work in costing out the difference between the two. But that, we'll be able to make data driven decisions when we have those numbers. And so not looking for the select board to commit right now at this meeting, hey, we're going to make those three wider. It's, we feel it's our job to let you know, hey, here's replacing it in kind. This is what it would look like if you widened it. And at the time, it could be that the cost is double and the select board says, we'd really like to do this, but we just can't. And, and so we'll discuss that further. Okay, moving along, the next one, which we talked about briefly, we have programmed right now a 3.1 million dollar bond article in 2025 to fund the renovation addition of the public safety building. This would obviously be advised based on the design engineering that we intend to bring before residents in 2024. And, but the timeline of that is design engineering in 2024, bond article in 2025, and hopefully be able to start construction as soon as in 2025 as after town. Questions about that one? I know we've talked about it a lot.
David.
Didn't expect a pushback. So the $300,000 annual contribution to the highway heavy equipment capital reserve. So one of the items that I'm working on, but I wasn't ready to bring to prime time yet is consolidating the equipment replacement plans for each of the capital reserve accounts that we have. Right? The, you've seen it from the fire chief year over year. He's done a fantastic job presenting to you. Here is, here is the equipment that I need to replace going out to 2030, whatever. And here's what I anticipate for cost. And this is what we need to add to the fund each year to be able to, to accomplish that. And we're working to develop that same model for all of the capital reserve accounts. And so what the road agent and I have done is listed out all of the highway heavy equipment replacement schedule items for that capital reserve, the anticipated cost and what we need to add to that capital reserve each year in order to continue replacing on schedule. And so to that point, we need to add $300,000 a year through and including 2026. And then we can reduce that contribution to $150,000 a year and leave it at 150, I think, through the, the entire replacement schedule. And so the road agent talked about this as a shot in the arm last year. This, we have basically just been appropriating enough money into the highway heavy equipment capital reserve to buy the truck that we need to buy the next year. To use this capital reserve and the equipment replacement program as it was intended, we should get on a schedule of appropriating the same amount of money each year that will give us enough money to replace the equipment we need to replace. So in the short term, that means $300,000 a year through 2026, and then after that, bringing it down to 150,000. Questions or concerns about that? Okay, moving on, the fire truck capital reserve. So the same thing, like I said, Rick really laid the foundation for presenting the funding plan for the capital reserves. But right now, the proposal is to maintain $100,000 contribution through 2025, then increase it to 150,000 through 2027, and then increase it to 200,000 through 2031. And that fully funds the equipment and the equipment replacement years listed in the capital improvement program and the fire department equipment replacement schedule. Moving on, finally, present a $220,000 warrant article in 2024 to fund the town's 20% share of the old Seddler's Road Bridge project. Obviously, we've talked about that for a number of years, but this is the town's 20% share. And that is currently scheduled for 2025 construction. But getting it in front of voters now ensures that we have the funding in place and doesn't delay the project. So we've made it through that list. We've made some notes and some asterisks exceptions to certain items in here that we know that we'll revisit. But is the select board comfortable making the prioritization changes in the funding plans as presented?
Yes.
Great. Anything else on the CIP?
It's challenging without all the data we need. So thanks, everybody. Working this through.
And of course, you know, we revisit this every year. And as Joyce mentioned in the beginning, we have, with Vanessa's leadership and with the team effort, we've been improving the process year over year. So when we revisit this next year, there's a lot we won't have to cover and we'll be able to focus on the new information that we have and adjust decision making, adjust priorities throughout the process.
It would be helpful if we can also sort and print this by department. I think as I'm looking at it and trying to identify, I think if you did it by department, it will allow residents to look and see that you really have projected the 10 years outward and that you've given, it gives you a much more cohesive way to kind of look at prioritization for each department. Just a thought.
No, so I didn't, I just didn't print you that copy of it. I just printed you the one that focuses on funding. I'll pull up on the screen, the document that's linked within the town administrator report includes both the projects organized this way and the projects organized by department.
Excellent.
And within each department, they're prioritized based on the priorities set by the department head. So let me just pull this up. Just so you all can see it. So again, this is at the bottom of that PDF. It ends with the narrative and then following the narrative is each of the projects. So you'll see in alphabetical order here, the Cemetery Conservation Commission Highway. You'll see the priority items listed in priority, the cost and a brief description over here.
Excellent.
So there is value in looking at it this way, no question. And then at the bottom of that document is the. And then at the bottom of that document is the same data, but presented in priority by year.
Excellent.
Okay. Thank you, Vanessa.
A lot of work.
We did have, uh, on this, on the CIP.
Public hearing.
No, this is an invited guest.
Sorry.
Ah, that's okay. You know, so I think, were you chair when we combined public hearings and invited guests? I forget.
Yeah, we did.
It's kind of a, the, the logic in it is when we invite somebody to be here, we want to put them at the beginning of the agenda. So we don't spend a lot of time before they're here because we've invited them here. And public hearings, we also always hold at the beginning of the meetings. Having them as two separate categories always seemed a little bit silly because sometimes we wanted to put the public hearing first, or sometimes we wanted to put the invited guest first. But maybe should I add us more specific annotation on whether it's an invited guest or, or a public hearing? So there's no confusion. All right. Well, this is not, this is not a public hearing. This is an invited guest.
All right.
We enjoyed our.
Oh, you mean like, you'd say like A dash invited guest? Is that what you mean? That, that probably, yeah, maybe.
What I.
Like just eliminate public hearing tonight because there was no public.
Oh, take it off. We could. I like leaving the agenda items, the category headers maybe the same. The, what I do when there's a public hearing is at the bottom, in the town administrator report, at the bottom of the entry is always a prompt to have public comment, open public comment, close public comment. So that's one way you could know if it's a public hearing or not. I'll try to make more.
I think we should let our town planner go home. We get really verbal. Talking a lot of things.
Have a question.
Yes.
How, how do our, our, when we look at our capital projects in, in these categories uh for the coming year, coming three years, coming 10 years, if we go backwards, the, the last year, the last three years, the last 10 years? How are we comparing as Barrington has grown and stuff and looking at capital projects and where we prioritize our funding?
Uh, I would say that we are getting to a point where we're a lot more organized. So I think what the history books have shown um for the bigger projects, that there has been a lot of, I don't want to say rea- reactionary, you know, a lot of it is opportunity driven. Hey, there's an opportunity available. We're going to pursue that and that's how things have happened. Um, and it has certainly taken planning to get to that point. Um, you look at some projects like the town hall, that was in a planning stage for 12 years, right? And so it wasn't a lack of planning that that project didn't happen for 12 years. Um, but it was a kind of a last minute opportunity that facilitated that project actually happening. There has been some really good planning based in the capital reserves. Uh, but there, we've also kind of fell behind, like the highway heavy equipment capital reserve, for example. The, as far as the big infrastructure projects, we have done a good job securing like bridge aid funds, you know, the Malago Bridge, Green Hill Road Bridge, Old Sudders Road Bridge. We have not done a good job historically planning for infrastructure projects that we're taking care of ourselves, right? That's why we're staring down a 10 and a half million dollar bond in 2025 because we haven't been properly planning for these deficient pieces of infrastructure that we known have been deficient, but have focused on other priorities. So I think the goal is, my goal, and I think the select board shares this, is to be more organized, have a plan in place that we can try to stick to, look for opportunities, right? Be ready to pivot if opportunities arise. Um, but at least get these, start crossing these projects off the list. So they don't continue to accumulate. And we sit with the select board um on a, an evening in 2023 and say, hey, you have to ask the voters for 12, 10 and a half million dollars just to fix these roads that have kind of been ignored. Is that, is that what you're looking for?
Yeah, just kind of, just wondering in scope and size and budget. Town's growing, their budgets will grow and like how much we've actually invested there last year.
Like proportion to the population?
Well, just in proportion to what we're looking at spending.
It's been less. It's been less because we have deferred projects.
Pick the can down the throat.
Right.
I, I think they're wise investments. I'm just, I'm just wondering, you know, people are looking at this pushback or, or the, the budget committee or all these. Now compared, you know. I think it's all justifiable and important and uh, just, just wondering how it's shifting historically from recent years.
Yeah, it's a good question. So I think maybe the most consistent way to present that. So I mean, I could give you good data and narrative for the last five years because I've been here. But prior to that, it's easy to get the numbers, not as easy to get the narrative. One of the things that um, the state requires reporting through the Department of Revenue Administration. And one of the just single numbers that comes from that process every year is the annual appropriation, period. That includes the Warren article, that includes any large projects. Um, you know, if you have a bond initiative, if you have um capital reserve contributions. And so it fluctuates, right? The year that we approved the town hall, it was pretty high. The year that we approved the Green Hill Road Bridge project, it was really high because we appropriated the full funds for that bridge, even though 80% was a grant. And so that number encompasses not just the operating budget, but also the capital investments above the operating budget. So I could pull those numbers, I could pull those numbers back as, as far back as we wanted to go. Um, but I can pull those out and plot those. Um, I'll present them at, at some point in the budget process. Um, if you think it would be valuable, maybe we like looking at the numbers that way, maybe not, but I'll pull them.
Perspective like that would be helpful.
The graph of it.
Mm hmm. Don't start with maybe 15 years?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd say at least 10s.
Yeah, I think 10, the 10-year plan kind of back and forth.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll start at 15 years. If we really like it, then we can go back farther.
All right, anything else? CIP?
Let's move ahead to the consent agenda. Um, I'll entertain a motion.
I would like to make a motion to approve the October 2nd 2027 agenda A2.
Amended.
With the removal of that, yes.
Second.
All right, roll call.
Our cop line?
Give it's an eye.
Go, Shad.
All right, cap the L O I. Let's move ahead to signatures, appointments, excuse me. Uh, so for the energy committee, we have Cindy Hoysington, who was appointed as an alternative method, uh, member of the energy committee with a term expiring in 2026. With a resignation on the committee, she is interested in becoming a full-time member. That um, her term would expire in March of 2025.
And I would make a motion to appoint Cindy Hoysington as a full member of the energy committee with a term expiring in 2025.
And a second from Rob, and uh, roll call.
Our cop eye.
Give it's an eye.
It's a go, Shad.
Cap the L O I. Uh, library trustee alternate. Uh, Ezra Hodgson is interested in becoming a library trustee alternate. And that term would expire in 2020.
Read his application and he was excited.
Oh, no, he's discussion.
Enthusiasm.
Yeah, thanks for volunteering.
Yeah.
And then for the Eyes and Glass Local River Advisory Committee, we have Ann Melvin, who's interested in being reappointed as a member um with a term expiring in 2026. And she previously served on it. I think there was a gap and then.
That's exciting.
Thank you for the continued service.
And trustee of trust funds, uh, that position is open. And Sally Barney is interested in filling that. And that would be a term to expire in March of 2025.
Great. Lot of volunteers.
And I'll turn it over to our administrator to give a staff report.
Super. So starting with work, anniversaries uh here, first meeting in October. Our own Sam Saroski was hired in the town of Barrington four years ago, serves in the police department, does a fantastic job. So uh, training opportunities, I have listed here some upcoming training opportunities. The one I'll call out specifically is the 82nd Annual NHMA Conference and Exhibition. That's November 15th and 16th. I went through the conference program and pulled out a sample of those programs and included them in my town administrator report. These are programs that I think individual select board members or maybe multiple select board members might be interested in. You're all welcome to register and attend. You can attend part of a day, a full day, both days. Um, it's up to you. The town uh makes money available to register for these, will reimburse mileage. Um, but I wanted to make sure that you all know, knew that that opportunity existed.
Are these in person?
In person only this year, yes.
Connor, are you attending? You have like a newborn at that time, don't you?
Yeah, I actually just let the um, the executive director of the municipal association know that I wouldn't be volunteering. Uh, so I'm on the board for the New Hampshire Municipal Association. So I usually volunteer uh for the registration table, things like that. And so I said, I wasn't going to commit to anything uh because I don't know what life's gonna be like with three kids.
One is like none, two is like 100, and three is like 1,000.
See, I, I always heard it got easier. I convinced my wife that it got easier starting at three.
Okay, good try. Yep, sorry. Let me turn my mic off.
She's gonna be sorely disappointed. Uh, but anyways, yeah, so I, I hope to, I hope to be able to attend.
Hard maybe.
Hard maybe, yeah, yeah. Definitely. There's been a lot of select board definite maybes right now, so I'll, I'll just count that one as.
Yeah, the community engagement and action is certainly an interesting. Um, I'd, I'd be curious to know if that's taking place on the 15th or the 16th.
Uh, do you know who is facilitating that?
No.
Sarah Reitzman.
Oh, well, there you have it.
Um, okay, moving on. Um, as you all know, because you have them, uh, Jim and Rob have theirs here tonight. Uh, we finished the budget binder, uh, and it is, the printed copies are available for all budget committee members and select board members. The point of having this uh here, uh, we're not talking about the budgets tonight. Uh, but I'm very proud to say that we have uh for the fourth year in a row now, the entire budget binder available electronically. Credit to Tiffany for getting it done at the same time as the printed copies this year to make sure that you all have the information, the public all has the information. So the web address is Barrington.
Is it hard being a rock star?
She told me she was in editing hell last week, so I think that's what was going on.
Something else.
Oh.
A lot of that. So barrington.nh.gov forward slash 2024 budget. So it's 300 pages, right? And so it's, the online version is organized the same as the budget binder by chapter. And each individual document is its own link. And so if you find something interesting, you can share it with your residents, send it out, put it out on community forums, engage discussion about the budget and budget development process. Um, it's, the, the process is intended to be open and transparent. The biggest way we do that is making all the information available um to anybody that's interested in it. And so we'll continue to update that uh online version as we update the in-person version. Uh, the budget committee uh will have their first meeting on October 10th. Uh, for the first time this year, those budget committee meetings will be available for virtual participation. And they'll also be recorded. And so if you are interested in virtual participation, barrington.nh.gov forward slash ABC meeting will take you to the landing page to join those meetings electronically. And the recordings will be available on the town's YouTube channel.
This is the first time ever.
First time ever. Absolutely. And then the select board budget development process will kick off on October 16th. Questions or comments about that?
Bring our binders in.
Bring your binders. Or electronic device and follow along, you know? Okay. Uh, voter checklist update. Um, this, th- this isn't anything actionable, but just fun information. So as of September 27th, Barrington has 600, 6,345 registered voters. So the supervises of the checklist is the organization responsible for maintaining an up-to-date checklist of registered voters. And there's a variety of tasks which change the amount of registered voters that we have. This year, something new that happened was the Secretary of State's office partnered with the United States Postal Service to basically share data and help ensure that our voter checklist was the most up-to-date as possible. And so as a result of that process, our supervisor, the checklist, uh, made it through the updates sooner than a lot of other communities. And so the net result so far has been we lost about 340 registered voters. I suspect that as other communities, the supervisors of the checklist and other communities make it through their process, we'll probably pick up a number of registered voters also. Um, but the, that's how we are at 6,344, 45, down from 7,859 back in 2021.
Thank you for that. My question was decrease due to what? So thank you.
Right. And the biggest decrease, the biggest single decrease is that 10-year um voter purge. So RSA 65439, I provided a link in my TA report. Uh, we're required every 10 years to send notice to anybody who hasn't voted in any election in the prior four years to verify if they're still a registered voter or not. And if they don't reply, they're automatically pulled off the list. That doesn't mean they left Barrington. They're just not very civically active. Okay, moving on to some other fun data. So the Seacoast Shipyard Association does uh some work to demonstrate the impact of their members in the seacoast community. So uh, I, I first started receiving this data back in 2021. And then now I have data from 2023. So Barrington is the largest town in New Hampshire. Has the largest population of any town in New Hampshire of employees at the shipyard at 157. There are four communities with more of a working population and they're all cities. Summersworth, Dover, Rochester, and Portsmouth. Um, so very interesting. The financial impact measured in payroll of those employees from the shipyard is 13.3 million dollars in our community. Again, I don't think we're gonna make, make any immediate decisions based on this information, but fascinating to think 157 of our residents work on the shipyard and bring 13.3 million dollars to the economy.
Some of them leave at 3:30 in the morning to get parking spaces on the shipyard. I have some young people I know that do that. They sleep in their cars for about an hour and a half, two hours before their workday starts, just so they're not parked in the North 40 every day.
Um, okay, moving on. So I included a printed um handout in your packet and it's linked online. Community Power, um, of, the Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire puts this together for its members. Please, Dan. Oh, okay.
Have a comment on this.
Okay, great. So what the energy committee is doing is they're gearing up to present to residents in March of 2024, a Warren article to initiate community power. And the energy committee through the select board has joined the Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire, which provides uh that gateway as a collective instead of an individual. So there's resources available for that. Part of the resources is helping to facilitate the um documentation, the narrative, the information sharing with residents through the process. And so this is one of the handouts that they have. Um, the energy committee and um, Rob wanted to get this in the hands of the select board. There is some discussion about what role the town should play in sharing documents like this to the residents uh through the process to make sure that we don't get into the advocacy area where we can't advocate with town funds. We can inform, but we can't advocate. So what the town's attorney advised is that it's perfectly appropriate, appropriate to make this document available on the town's website, to share it with the select board. It would be inappropriate for the town to print 4,000 copies of this and distribute it in the community.
Oh.
And so we can share the information, we can make this available, but we shouldn't be um spending money through printing and distribution. But the Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire could, um, you know, that, that type of divide. So I don't know, Rob, if you want to add any to the content or other discussions the energy committee has had. There will be more conversations upcoming.
Yeah, we had, those, those were questions we had, whether or not, you know, this could be on the website, whether or not, you know, CPCNH um likely print and provide things like this, so we could leave in places around town. Um, you know, as, as select board members or members of the energy committee, you know, when do we use our political voice as volunteers and not being paid to advocate for something that we think would benefit the citizens?
Right.
So those are some of the questions that we were trying to get sorted out.
So there will, please, Dan.
Just FYI, today, uh, those of you who like to listen to rednecks uh talk politics, a guy named Jim Hightower, used to be the Agriculture Commissioner of Texas, um, had a primary article was about um, BP CNH. And were prominently put in the planning section of the, his website.
About New Hampshire, right? And some communities in Texas wanted to join.
No, no, no. He, he was just saying, here's, here are communities fighting about, against uh, the um, monopolistic electric, electrician, electrical. Electric. Yeah. But we were on the list.
Exciting. So there will be a series of public hearings um coming before the select board in advance of the process. And so we'll be getting those scheduled, um, probably starting later this month. Um, last item, I included in your packet a printed copy of the final energy audit uh for the property at 105 Ramsdale Lane. Remember, this was mostly grant funded, uh, which is very exciting. And so the, as I mentioned earlier, uh, this, the recommendations made in here are going to be, be held uh on the back burner as we wait to understand what's going to. on the back burner as we wait to understand what's going to happen at 105 Ramsdale Lane. And so there are a lot of things in play, right? We decided tonight that we'll probably include some level of renovation money in the library article that could be used towards the project. I wouldn't expect we would use those towards, you know, items identified in the energy audit, but we could do some of these projects in conjunction while we're doing construction. We could add to that scope, maybe using other funding sources. So that's one thing that's in play. Another item that's in play is there's a $1 million grant program for community centers put forward by New Hampshire Community Development Finance Authority. It's a, I'll call it a one-time grant program. It's actually a two-time. They split it up into two sections. So you remember, we talked about it back in April, or earlier this year, and they gave out about $9 million then, and they'll be giving out the remaining $11 million. The decisions will be in February. So we will be applying for a $1 million grant for programming improvements at 105 Ramsdale Lane, making it a true blue community center. So that grant proposal will talk about added programming space and accompanying facilities. That proposal will have an option for if the library leaves and an option for if the library stays, to make sure that we can access those funds. So that billion dollars could address some or a lot of these energy recommendations. It requires a 15% match, and the Recreation Commission has already committed Recreation revolving funds to meet that matching requirement cash on hand. Finally.
Is there a section in that grant for energy savings? Usually CDFA grant proposals really?
You would think so, but.
There isn't in this one.
There isn't, because this isn't a CDFA grant program.
Okay.
It was, the state had money that they wanted towards a specific purpose, and they identified CDFA as a good.
Built it through. Okay, very good.
Okay, so the last thing about that is you'll notice when you read through the proposed improvements, a lot of them are at the food pantry, the food pantry part of the building. So there is, through New Hampshire Saves, there's funding available, up to 100% funding for energy improvement if the beneficiaries are more than 50% low or moderately low income. And so very likely, the clients of the food pantry will qualify as more than 50% low or moderately low income. And so it's possible that we'll be able to fund some of those initiatives through up to 100% grant funding. And so we'll continue to pursue that. I say it's on the back burner. It's not really on the back burner. We're not, and nothing's shovel-ready. We're not going to go start construction tomorrow, but those are some of the things we have in play.
Interesting. Those entry items are the ones that have the fastest payback.
Right. You know, and I don't know, there are folks that do know all of the history about that addition as a, that was basically a garage for the ambulance service, I think, when it was still volunteer. And so I guess it's not surprising that something that was originally built as a garage isn't super energy efficient. I don't know at what stage a lot of improvements were made. Okay, so yeah, I just wanted to make sure you all had a copy of that. We'll be talking about it more. We'll be taking action on it. But it was exciting that we had it done, and I just met with a member of the Energy Committee today, and he's going to start working on a grant proposal to perform an energy audit of the Public Safety Building, which would be a great opportunity to have the energy audit completed, hand that over to the design engineer, and say, build this scope into whatever design renovation addition we do.
Great idea. So I thought it was interesting that the fuel and electricity for the Recreation Department is almost $30,000 a year. Just for comparison, and I know they're very different buildings, but what does this building, what does it cost to heat and provide electricity?
A lot less, but I can get that number for you.
Sure, a lot less. Tiffany, I think you're on. Are there any other additional questions?
Nothing exciting, nothing even for signature tonight, but on Thursday, I'll have an oath for Cynthia Hoyson.
Thank you.
So old business. We're looking at the Public Safety Building and the 105 Ramsdale Generator Project Award.
I had a quick question on that. I didn't see in the analysis for the generators that it showed the number of years of warranty for different types. And I only ask this because at a prior building that I built, there was a Kohler generator, and it had a pretty robust warranty. So the Generac generators, how long have they warranted?
Yes, so that's a great point and a very savvy observation. So what we did is we spent the time, and this was actually a select person, Sakosha's recommendation, to develop a comprehensive bid specification and indicate that in submitting a proposal, you're acknowledging that you're meeting this bid spec. And we specified that we wanted a five-year extended warranty for all generators, everything that they propose. So some of those may come with the manufacturer off the shelf, and others, they're extending that in the price.
Excellent.
So what you have, the printed tabulation that you have is each of the six bid proposals that we received, which is fantastic. I want to give credit to Jim Anderson, who managed all of the communication with the proposed contractors, the site visits, and those conversations. And so online, you'll find all six proposals, including an amendment submitted by Generator Connection based on a tabulation error. And what the table shows you is that the low bidder at $188,000, the low bidder by over $60,000, is Generator Connection, located here in Barrington. So Generator Connection has performed work for the town before, the Town Hall most recently. We've been satisfied with that service. And so what we have done is two things: recommended awarding the Public Safety Building and Emergency Communications Tower 105 Ramsdale Lane generator scope to Generator Connection, the low bid at $188,050. And that uses $74,500 from the FEMA grant that we received. And then the second piece is using, authorizing $113,550 from the ARPA allotment. So we had already earmarked this back in 2021, but now that we have specific dollar numbers, we'll authorize spending that in those terms. That's the proposal.
We should definitely kick the can down the road.
Are you gonna make a motion?
I'll make, yeah. Make the motion, Jim.
Make a motion to award the Public Safety Building and Emergency Communications Tower.
One, the microphone's off, and two, I think Danan has it.
Does it matter that this is gonna be 34 weeks as opposed to two bids, or 24 to 30? Does that matter?
I'm not sure.
Because they'll still have to get the generator. We've been put on notice.
Okay.
We may need a generator for you.
I would like to make a motion to award the Public Safety Building and Emergency Communications Tower 105 Ramsdale Lane generator scope to Generator Connection, the low bid at $188,050, using the $74,500 FEMA generator grant and $113,550 from the town's ARPA allotment.
Second.
All right, roll call.
Harakawai.
Gibbs, aye.
Sakosha, president. No, Sakosha, aye.
Capella, aye. Motion is carried.
Just one last thing on that subject. The, one thing that we learned during this process is that the propane service to the Public Safety Building is undersized to accommodate a renovation addition. And so if, since we are going to be cutting the pavement in the back of the Public Safety Building to run new electrical lines in from the offset generator, we intend at the same time to run an additional or upsized, I don't do propane, so I don't really know, but propane themed into the building in order to accommodate the renovation addition. So that's not part of this scope. Once we have those details, I'll plan to come back before the Select Board to unlock funding to do that scope at the same time, so we get that taken care of, and it's not something we have to worry about.
Excellent.
Good idea.
Stay tuned.
Great. So moving on to new business, we have some late-breaking new business. So I will turn this over to our town administrator to give us an update on fiber in Barrington.
Yeah, so brief history. You remember, last year, almost for a full year, the Technology Committee worked with a consultant to evaluate how to bring fiber to the home for the residents of Barrington. The result of that process was a Warren article to voters in March of this year asking to authorize a non-binding agreement with Consolidated Communications to partner in any way possible to bring fiber to the residents of Barrington. Residents overwhelmingly approved that article, and we've continued to work with Consolidated behind the scenes to look for these opportunities. Fortunately, an opportunity has presented itself. Some of the infrastructure funding coming down from the federal government is being administered through the Bureau of Economic Affairs as the Broadband Matching Grant Initiative, VMGI, and Consolidated is pursuing that grant funding. And so they are proposing to the state a multi-town project, which includes Barrington and Stratford. And so in the printout that you have, and this will be on the website, on the third page, you'll see that area of town that they're looking to expand their services. So it doesn't cover all of Barrington, but it covers a proposed 2,200 addresses. So currently, 660 addresses in Barrington have access to the Phytium fiber product of Consolidated Communications. This would add 2,200, bringing the total closer to 3,000. There's about 4,100 addresses in Barrington, and so this would cover a vast majority of Barrington. What Consolidated would like from the Select Board tonight is a vote saying that the Select Board supports the grant application for Consolidated for this project. So in Barrington, I think that's relatively easy because voters made that decision when they voted in March. So your vote is really just supporting a decision of voters, and there's no commitment from Barrington. So all of the funds are consolidated funds and grant funds, and their schedule is 2025.
And no matching funds.
No matching funds from Barrington, no funding from Barrington.
No brainer.
Make a motion.
And can you tell me, what's the green and yellow?
Yes, so, yeah, there's three colors.
Yeah.
So what the FCC sets is, they set thresholds for unserved and underserved, and it's based on the availability of download and upload speeds. So you are considered underserved if you don't have access to speeds of 100 megabits per second download, 20 megabits per second upload. You are considered unserved if you have, gosh, I think it's 20 over 5. Don't quote me on the unserved, but it's based on speed. So orange is underserved, red is unserved. So all of the orange and red that you see on the map is to be funded through the grant program, that VMGI grant program. That grant program has a 75-25 match. So 75 comes from the grant, 25 comes from Consolidated Communications. The green that you see doesn't have any un or underserved, and so all of that portion, Consolidated would build out 100% on their own dime. So they're out there, they're doing this work, they're gonna build a complete cable system. Good question.
I'd like to make a motion to.
Support.
For the VMGI grant opportunity.
Second.
Roll call.
Harakawai.
Gibbs, aye.
Mr. K.
Sakosha.
Capella, aye. This is really exciting.
And if you have friends in Stratford, the Select Board in Stratford will be considering that same question tomorrow. I talked with the town administrator today, and I explained to her all of the details. I provided her the background documentation. Consolidated hadn't been successful in getting in touch with them. And so their Select Board will consider it tomorrow. And it's important for this part of the project, because it's the two projects, Barrington and Stratford are the same cable plant, it's important that they have support from the Stratford Select Board also.
What time is their meeting tomorrow night?
Probably seven. I don't know what time they meet, to be honest. But I'll let you know before this meeting's over.
Okay.
So Select Board member reports and concerns. We'll start with Select Board member Harakaw.
So the zoning board of adjustments approved one special exception and one variance, both related to the same property this past month, and had one continuance in relation to a zoning ordinance about commercial animals in residential neighborhoods. So that's being brought forward in October.
ZBA.
To the ZBA. And I participate in the Housing Committee. I did not attend Saturday's meeting, but I can assure you that the majority of the responses that have been received have come through the Facebook media posts that are taking place weekly on all of the most utilized Facebook pages for Barringtonites.
Some of the Energy Committee, information's already been shared tonight. The next Energy Committee meeting is going to be this Thursday. And not anything new on conservation. Saturday, I attended the Housing Chapter for the Master Plan Session. Interesting. Wasn't as well-attended as last year's session, residents, but I would invite people to go complete the survey. They've extended that, and you have a say in what you'd like to see for housing in Barrington.
The Library will meet, Library of Trustees will meet with the Building Committee on the 25th of October. Hope to have more details on the plan. School Board is going to have a town meeting Thursday, 5th of October, at the School Board, School SAU 74 Office, to discuss the, getting the $133,000 from the state to spend it. ABC will start meeting on the 10th of October.
Okay, Technology Committee is still working on finalizing upgrades. Class 6 and Private Roads Committee have a final draft submitted to legal for review. And then the Rec Department, obviously, they got their van, and they're gearing up for a new TEAM team program, which is geared toward teens with developing leadership and whatnot.
October 21st, Fall Fest at the elementary school this year with extended hours. So bigger and better than ever. You remember how crowded it was at that huge space on Ramsdale Lane last year? Elementary school, they upgraded to a larger facility to accommodate the crowds, and they extended the hours, which I will get for you in just a second. Do you remember the hours?
I don't, not often.
October 21st. Okay, yes, barrington.nh.gov/fallfest. From 2:30 to 5:30.
Oh, I'm wrong.
Yeah, so this used to be trunk or treat, AKA trunk or treat, Fall Fest, bigger and better than ever.
Have a Disney princess trunk. Gift bags for our Barrington children.
If things happen according to plan, I'll be.
You can get a ring pop and a tattoo that says princess.
You have to wear it to the next meeting.
Oh, not scared.
I was not able to attend the last Planning Board meeting, but they talked about the CIP and any new ordinances they wanted to present, which was a very wide-ranging discussion and the difficulty of getting language.
It's very challenging, yeah, very challenging.
All right, we're moving on to public comment. Is there any public comment here in the room? Looking at none. How about remote?
Like it's all staff?
Thank you, staff. I'll just give the comment that on social media, the word is out about the prior, about the idea for the library at the prior medical building, and people that I would not have expected. expected to support this project maybe at all are all on board with that location and this approach. And that's wonderful to see.
Likewise.
Yep, getting very positive response.
Start with the text.
I'll close, non-public, I mean, public comment. We do not have a non-public session needed tonight, and entertain a motion to adjourn.
I would like to make a motion to adjourn, please.
Okay, roll call.
Hardicoff I.
Gibbs and I. Sakosha I.
Capello I. The meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.